I will call the regular meeting. Ridgeway County Council for winter, January tenth, twenty twenty four. Happy year, everybody. Call it to order and have a roll call, please.
Counselor Grantley.
Here.
Broder.
Here.
Lakin.
Yeah.
Skyler. Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. All right, that brings us to additions and deletions and orderizations. Please agenda, do they have anything?
The one item at the end of the topic matters, which is the statement and direct item regarding preliminary needs assessment for the ductile iron water line.
Okay. That's on the agenda elsewhere, but you need a separate discussion for that.
It is.
Yeah, there was something.
Maybe it was just in the. Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, I'll count on you to remind me. That brings us to adoption of the consent calendar. Is anybody wants to follow?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made by the second by Mr. JT. All those in favor? I need to try and do a roll call since we got.
Oh, good thought.
But we'll do a roll by then. It's not even that one member.
Okay. Counselor Graham, Graham.
Hi.
Broder.
Hi.
Yeah.
Lakin.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Hi.
And Mayor Clark.
Hi. Thank you. A passage unanimously. That takes us to public comments. Establish time on the agenda. Frank Kuno, I'm sure has something for us regarding any item not otherwise listed on the agenda, and comments are limited to five minutes focus. Come on up, Kuno.
Hey.
What do you got for us this month?
Okay, I think we should be creative and we have a lot of money to spend on aesthetic work and looking for a lot of cheap money. We could cross off one of the streets and make it a sledding street. Maybe imitate you a little bit and just a precursory drive around town. Seems like we don't have any steep roads, but at least something would be better than nothing. As far as the sledding hill at the post office is lovely, but it's not quite enough, I think. We should encourage maybe evening sledding, whatnot, to go all around winter time activities.
In rolling garden.
Maybe.
Snow.
Doors, we forget it off, or we just, let me get snow, maybe not plow it. Now, of course, because I'm a resident of Martha Street, I would love to suggest Martha Street, but I don't think it's steep enough, even though I'd get rid of some traffic. But I think maybe North Charlotte Street or North. Mary Street.
Charles.
Or Charles, just think about it. We can go over there with an angle finder and see what's the steepest. And what I think for the winter season, for how little it is, to make it one way and enable us to go in the evening, go sledding, wouldn't take much, maybe a few bales of straw. A couple of signs that says one way and maybe the collaboration and compromise with the neighbors so they can just all for a little bit for one way only. So I don't think that would be that much hard to do. No, just needs a little bit of willpower, imagination. So that's why I'm here to raise up your imagination and go around and designate us to have a block or a block. Maybe the marsh and us with ideas what's steep and what's not so steep and we can maybe experiment at least and rather than not. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Suggesting stuff. Look into that as you have time. I know you don't have a lot of extra time. It's an interesting thought.
Maybe the mushroom heat covers the hot fire.
That probably could be done. All right, that takes us to public question.
Jake's Jake's got his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Missed that. Sorry, Jake. Go ahead.
Hi, speaking to you tonight as the county's representative on the the Home Trust of Erie County Board of Directors. And just wanted to ask for some participation from an elected town council member. Because I think I've spoken with a couple of you about this one on one, but wanted to bring it to the full board. That the Home Trust is looking to formalize its relationship with all three governments in a way where the town, city, and county could lay down the expectations that they have for a housing services provider and what they would expect to pay for that. So far, for the last three years, we've been going year by year with yearly requests, but wanted to have a conversation with all three local governments about what kind of services they want to see from the Home Trust or any housing services provider and what they'd want to, what they'd want to pay for them. And so I'm, I would like to convene a work session with all three local governments before the end of June. But before that, wanted to speak with Preston, who is the representative on the Home Trust Board for the town. And I was hoping to get the involvement of at least one elected town council member as to have these preliminary conversations. So don't need to get an answer right now. And if you aren't able to send someone, that's all right as well. But just wanted to make you aware of this effort and make the request to the whole board for some of these preliminary talks.
Great, thanks. So this isn't asking for an elected board member just been elected to come to these talks about formalizing the structure with the communities and the Home Trust. The governmental entities in the Home Trust, right?
Can you clarify your question?
You're not asking for one of us to join the board. You're just asking for one of us to join some discussions about what we're talking about.
That is correct.
I'm sure we can make that happen. I don't think we need to necessarily do it right now, but we'll think it up.
Okay, and please just get in touch with me when you're ready to add a person to these conversations.
That's good. Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
All right, that takes us to everything. Public question presentations. I have number six. We've got a community health assessment presentation from Tanner Henry, Erie County Public Health Director. Thanks for coming, Tanner.
Thank you for having me. Tanner Henry, Public Health Director. Mr. Clark invited me to come talk about our community health assessment process. This was presented to the county commissioners on October the twenty fourth. So I want to make it this presentation available to you guys too. So thank you for that opportunity. Apologize if this is the second time some people have heard this, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Schmidt. Apologize twice. So the first presentation that we did on the twenty fourth was with Margaret Walker and Erica Storkel. They're, we live in Gunnison and they work in the West Central Public Health Partnership, which is a partnership of our six counties that surround, or five counties that surround us here. Our public health directors coming together as a partnership and working on projects as a collective. Because we know if we're all putting out the same messages and working on the same projects together as a region, we can make those messages and those projects stronger. So this assessment was done with the West Central Partnership in mind. So when you see the data and the topics we're talking about, think about Region Ten. So our six county region is where we're talking about this assessment coming from. So as you can see, Region Ten Silver Threat is in sale in mineral counties. They're a combined health department. San Miguel County, Gunnison County, Montrose County, Delta County, and us. The timeline for the community health assessment and the public health improvement timeline started with a community engagement effort, starting with looking at secondary data in the fall of twenty twenty two. So that's looking at website, government websites, corporate websites, publications, things like that. Moving into the winter of twenty three, a primary data review, which was surveys and key informants. A lot of you were public key informants. I've got a key informant interview as part of this process. So that's when that primary data review happened. Spring of twenty three is when prioritization process happened, informed by the capacity assessment, secondary and the primary data. And then summer fall twenty twenty three planning process began, informed by data and community engagement. This next slide is kind of busy, but I wanted to just highlight health equity is a huge focus of public health. Prevention is number one, obviously, but health equity is very important to us. We want to ensure that people have equal opportunities to achieve the highest health possible, regardless of economic status or things like that. So health equity is a huge piece of public health. And our role in addressing these social determinants of health, like physical environment and economic opportunity, social factors like social support systems. Public health's role in addressing these social determinants of health are advocating for and defining public policy to achieve health equity. Coordinating interagency efforts, which is kind of what this public health assessment is, working with other agencies to accomplish this. Creating organizational environments that enable change. Also data collection, monitoring and surveillance, population based interventions to address health factors and community engagement and capacity building. So that's what we're really focused on in public health when it comes to health equity, and it's all part of the assessment process. All right, community health data, community health assessment data. So we started, like I said, with the secondary data, moving into the quantitative data, the surveys that were put out, and also quality qualitative data, those key informant interviews. The data topics that were addressed in these surveys and interviews are vulnerable populations, behavioral health, healthcare access, childcare, COVID nineteen, affordable housing, aging in place, barriers, like barriers to health, and food insecurity. When we look at demographics, shouldn't be too surprising. We are a growing county, much like Colorado, not quite the same pace as Colorado as a whole, but we are growing as a county. And we all know when it comes to looking at race and ethnicity, we are very non Hispanic white in Erie County, about ninety three percent from the US Census from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Also, the assessment wanted to learn about linguistically isolated households. So households that speak limited English or know English is important for us to know and to address. In Erie County, we have a lower percentage of these isolated households that don't speak English as a primary language. Affordable housing and healthy housing, I won't touch on too much. It gets talked about a lot, as it should. There's a lot of organizations doing a lot of good in this area. I'm still trying to figure out personally how public health can fit into the affordable equation. Usually we address healthy housing things like radon, lead paint, and healthy housing scenarios. But I am talking to some people at the state and with CALFO, Colorado Association of Local Public Health Officials, to learn more about how public health can address affordability in the housing situation as well. So Mr. Nice brought up, when we talked to the commissioners, a study with better data than this, the Mind the Gap study that was done. So these numbers here, you guys have seen a lot of them, but I think there's better numbers out there that exist than when this this assessment was done. So I don't need to talk about affordable and healthy housing a whole lot. You guys all know about it. We all know it's an issue. It's, it's, it's on our, it's on our radar as well. Okay, mental health, behavioral health. This is addressing in Region Ten middle school and high school students because the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey is such a good data source. Looking at electronic vapor use, we had, we do have in Region Ten a higher percentage than the state of Colorado, thirty four point nine percent compared to thirty point four percent. Attempted suicide one or more times in the last twelve months, six point seven percent in Region Ten compared to seven point two percent in Colorado. Physical activity totaled at least of one hour per day on five or more in the past seven days. In Region Ten, we have a higher percentage than the state when it comes to physical activities. So it shows we're getting our, our middle school and high school students engaged in physical activity. Felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that they stopped doing usual activities in Region Ten. About thirty three point five percent compared to thirty nine point six percent in Colorado. So some data points were better, some data points were worse than the state as Region Ten. And again, this is looking at middle and high school students, just because of that data source, it's a little harder to collect the data on adults. Aging in place, we wanted to recognize, especially in Erie County, this slide pertains to Erie County. We know there's a lot of older folks who want to live in their home as long as they can. They don't want to go to have to live in a nursing home or go seek alternative housing. And we want to keep these folks living in their house as long as possible. So at public health, I want to explore more ways that we can do that. How can we provide better senior services and older adult health? There is a new home health organization on the Western Slope, TASCOS, that we've been working with, trying to refer people to them. But essentially, aging in place is on our radar and we, we do want to do more of public health to older adult health and keeping people living in their home longer. So when it comes to percent of people with a disability, age sixty five to seventy four years old, we have a lower percentage. In the state, twenty point six percent compared to twenty two point seven. When we look at folks seventy five years and older, forty point one percent compared to the Colorado average of forty seven point five. Ambulatory difficulty, like difficulty getting around, nine point six percent for folks sixty five and older compared to the Colorado average of seventeen point seven. And also independent living difficulty, sixty five and older, nine point two percent compared to Colorado's eleven point four percent. So we're doing good on these metrics, but I think there's still room for improvement when it comes to helping our older adults. Access to care, specifically addressing insurance. This is, this is certainly a topic we've been working on at public health just in the last few days, trying to get more people connected to health insurance and level. Starting with adults without health coverage, about eight point eight percent, which is lower than the state average. So that's good. We have less, less adults without health insurance coverage. Children without health insurance coverage, seven point seven percent compared to the state average of five point seven. So it's similar, but still doing worse than the state when it comes to children without health insurance coverage. Moving on to working age adults eligible but not enrolled in Medicaid, so they're eligible, but they haven't got enrolled, nineteen point two percent compared to the state value of twelve point one. So we can certainly do better on getting adults enrolled for the benefits they're eligible for. And then children eligible but not enrolled in Medicaid or CHP plus twenty six point one percent, which is quite high when you look at the state value of six point three percent. Actually, I had a call with Tom Heffernan today from ROCC, reaching out about this data point specifically, because he saw it in the first presentation. And the ROCC, their work group that they have to, I can't remember the name of the work group, but he's very interested in pursuing this and seeing how we can lower this twenty six point one percent number. So more to come on that. And I'm happy that there's some community organization. Is that Mr. Tom? Okay, some of the top issues that came out from our discussions with public health directors, affordable housing, nothing too surprising, behavioral health and mental health, prevention and education health, also including chronic diseases, women's health and cancer, access to primary and specialty care services, aging in place, affordability of care, childcare, transportation and immigrant access to healthcare resources. So again, these are top issues written down by public health directors in Region Ten. And the priority populations we're addressing are seniors, immigrants and non English speakers, LGBTQ plus, children, homeless, homeless population, and also low income populations. When it comes to the Colorado Health Assessment and Planning System, we use a prioritization scoring tool. So the public health directors had topics and then we ranked them on and give them different weights based on these four factors primarily. Number one, the significance to the public, to public health. So does the issue we're trying to attack, does it impact a larger number or a high percentage of people in our community? We give that a current, a weight of one. Do health disparities exist? Are the subpopulations more affected than the general public? For example, is, does tobacco affect the LGBTQ population more than straight white or straight? The straight population, I should say. That's also a criteria weight of one. Ability to impact the issue. So we, kind of like I was talking about with affordable, affordable housing, we know it's at the top of the concern. But do we have the ability to impact it as the issue as public health? Do strategies exist that can be implemented locally, produce the desired outcome? Does community support for change exist, including political will? We know that as much as we could want something to get done, if there's no political will, there's no window of opportunity open, that's probably not going to happen. So we're always looking for community support and also political will when it comes to topics we want to address. Capacity to address the issue. Does our local organization are prepared to take the lead on the issue? Do we have the capacity to address this ourselves? Right now, we only have about three people in the public health office. So there's not a lot right now that we can take on more than what we're currently doing. But as you'll see towards the end of this presentation, part of our plan is to build that capacity back up. And also prior priority. Was this a priority in the last public health assessment? And regional consensus, is this a top priority for your county? So we're each asking each public health director for your county, is this an important issue and can we get consensus on that? So when it comes to scoring these different topics, these are the criteria that we were looking at. And when we rank the priorities at our, our workshop with the public health directors in Montrose, we met at the U Indian Museum for a day. Behavioral health and mental health come out on top. As shouldn't be too big of a surprise, followed by aging in place. Number three, prevention and health, that's right, prevention and education health. Number four, environmental justice. Number five, immigrant access to health. Number six, childcare, and that should be a number seven, access to primary, primary and specialty care. As you can see, based on those results, you might be wondering, as, as the commissioners wisely pointed out, or astutely pointed out, where's affordable housing? And there's results. And it was just a feeling amongst our public health directors that we don't have a clear way that we know how to get that ball started yet. How can public health address the affordability issue? That's kind of why it's not on this list. We, we talk about more radon, getting people radon test kits for free and getting lead paint tested, things like that, or lead paint mitigation. So I think there's still opportunity for us to fit in the conversation for affordable housing. We're just looking for that still. All right, so the two top priorities we landed on as directors, we decided two was enough to start with behavioral health and mental health and capacity building for our partnership. Many of the public health departments in our Region Ten are shorthanded like we are, still a little bogged down from the pandemic, believe it or not. Still a little stretched thin, still a little burned out, still having a hard time recruiting and, and just having enough boots on the ground, enough hands to get this work done. So in the planning process, we came out with priorities, two priority areas and goals and some, some strategies on how to achieve those. So starting with first, the capacity area of, sorry, the priority area of building capacity for the partnership. So what are we going to do in this priority area? The goal is to improve our West Central Public Health Partnership's capacity to operate as a collective, thereby contributing to a sustainable public health system that ensures community environmental wellness. So we need to build up our boots on the ground, our, our people who can actually carry out this work. People who can write grants, people who can implement grants. It's just, it takes work, as you all know, and it's hard to do with, with a full plate and with not a lot of hands. So how can we, how can we achieve this goal? Attain and streamline flexible, fluid funding in order to cross support projects and initiatives and proactively address emerging needs. We're always looking for grant opportunities to help address these things. Conduct a public health internal capacity assessment, which includes environmental assessment and based on the needs gaps indicated in the assessment, provide the necessary appropriate professional development to improve retention and capability among the public health staff in Region Ten. So again, just building up our professional development, our knowledge base and our staff. Pilot an internal communication system to keep West Central Partners up to date on the latest happenings, training, successes and challenges. We don't really have a streamlined system in our Region Ten partnership to communicate what's going on. What are you guys doing? Are you still doing testing? Are you guys doing this? We don't have a great, there's no great system for that. And we really want to work on that and build that up, do trainings together. A lot of times we share the same challenges, really. Sometimes we don't. And that's right. It's really important to work as a partnership to bounce ideas off of people to share those challenges because someone might have already experienced it and they can share that, that wisdom with, with us or with me. Pilot a communication system to continuously engage and collaborate with West Central stakeholders, such as yourselves, and realign the partnerships agreements and commitments. We realized at our meeting that we used to have an IGA with our six county partnership that each county will say, yes, we're going to contribute this amount of funds to the partnership to pay for Erica and Margaret to do what they do. And that had lapsed for a long time. We wanted to just reengage everyone and make sure we're all committed to this partnership and have that in writing and get some agreements in place. So that was part of capacity building as well. And then the second priority area, behavioral health and mental health. The goal to promote holistic individual and community happening by building confidence and trust in the public health system to improve behavioral health outcomes. I think we have a lot of work to do still in public health when it comes to building trust. And especially when it comes to being able to address behavioral health. How are we going to do that? Internal education. So first, we're going to start off by educating all local staff in our six counties on behavioral mental health conditions and on available behavioral mental health resources. So number one, just training staff on what mental health conditions and exist out there. What are people going through? What are they experiencing? So we can know that and be able to help the public better and also connect them to resources. When we did this assessment and I was pulling out the data specifically for Erie County, the number one topic I noticed in mental health was the question based around, do you know what resources are available? Almost eighty percent of people said no. They just don't know what's available, you know, and, and that's on us. We need to get the message out that there's access health systems, Center for Mental Health. There's, there's different organizations doing different things in mental health in the area that we can tap into. Tri-County Health Network, places like that. People just don't know what's available. So that's been a huge effort. Becca is one of our nurses at our office, working on a resource list. I know the CTC Community Communities that Care has a work group that Becca's a part of also, also looking at resources and trying to figure out how do we get this resource list complete and posted somewhere where it's, it's easy to access and people are going to see it and, and read it. Is that a website? Is that a kiosk? Is that, you know, just brainstorming how to get this information to the public?
I think it's all of the above.
Yeah, right. It's all of the above. So, and that's another thing. We, we do want to engage community organizations and their work also to see how we can support it, what they're doing, and also bring them into the fold and what we're doing. So part of bringing that education to the community, a lot of you have heard of mental health first aid or QPR, which is question, persuade and refer. They're all kind of these de-escalation type of trainings, community members helping community members. One training that we're looking at as our West Central Public Health Partnership is called COMMENT. It's an acronym for changing our mental and emotional trajectory. And this was a training specifically for rural agriculture based communities in Colorado. It came out of the. And this was a training specifically for rural agriculture-based communities in Colorado. It came out of the eastern plains. And essentially it teaches people how to intervene when they encounter someone who's in a quote vulnerable, vulnerable stance and help shift that person's mental trajectory back to a place of wellness instead of spiraling, you know, continuing that mental health crisis. COMMENT helps fill the gap and is a strong complement to other strategies to reduce suffering resulting in the high levels of stress in rural and agricultural communities. COMMENT aligns with rural hopeful values of neighbors, helping neighbors and communities being their own best resource. And I believe that, you know, there's not always going to be the mental health system that encounters that person who's going through a crisis. It's going to be their neighbor, it's going to be their friend, who's that first point of contact usually. COMMENT empowers friends and neighbors to be more prepared to support others' mental health needs, especially before a crisis. COMMENT does not ask community, community members to be the fix. Rather, the program trains community members how to initiate a supportive interaction or potentially emotional conversation using a simple conversational seven-question guide. The seven questions and statements include acknowledgement that someone is, quote, is not yourself, asking how they are, observation of behavior, other change, asking about family or social life, or an invitation to engage the conversation later. COMMENT questions are built around evidence-based techniques of using layered education, mindfulness and motivational interviewing approach. COMMENT is easy to teach and aims to make these tools more accessible to a broader community. So this is a training that's we're looking at as our partnership, bringing this to each county in our partnership and having community members join for free. Probably host more than one. We don't have dates set. We're looking at a train, the trainer model, where we can have a member from one of our public health staff trained to facilitate this, this training. So we won't have to call in someone to come from Denver, call in someone to come from Montrose County or from Telluride to come do a training in our community. We'll have our own community members trained to be that trainer. So that's the goal. That's one, one way that we want to engage the community. Part of that external education on the second bullet. And next steps. We're going to 2024 now, year one of the Public Health Improvement Plan Implementation. We are trying to get the action plan and the, the year one plan on the county website at this point. So people can view that, give us some feedback. The county commissioners will be also approving the Public Health Improvement Plan. They sign off on it and that gets sent to the state health department who signs off on it. So it's, it's quite the process. And that'll be on January 23rd. Trying to get that on the next commissioner's agenda. I'm sure Mr. Nice knows about it already. So that will be coming up. We will have the commissioners weigh in on it, give their feedback and sign off. Access to the data is on our West Central Public Health website. It's really a pretty built-out website. WCphp.org is where you can find all this information. And my contact info is below. Have a new email address. But Margaret and Erica are available by email as well. So that's the gist of the community health assessment, how it happened, what data we looked at, what the collection process looked like, what the prioritization process looked like, and the results from that. The fleshed out plan with table of contents and a template of goals and strategies and actions will be posted on the county website for folks to have. I know there's already some community members interested in, Carolyn Dresser, a student, super interested in in getting that plan and, and working together with us on how we can work together with ROCC, Communities That Care, other organizations who want to do more for mental health and behavioral health in the community. We're going to tie into that too. So. Any questions or feedback or?
Great, Jen. Thank you. Anybody have a question?
I do, actually. So first one, the question and then based just connectivity wise. Going back to the assisted living part of it, I'm curious, do you know how many assisted living facilities are in your A county?
Done. I don't think there's any.
All right. And to that point, one thing I was thinking about especially is Jake still on there? Tell if he's on Zoom, on the housing trust side of it. I know that when Andrea and Kelly hosted folks for the future project they have with the home trust over here on Sherman, they were polling local businesses especially to figure out the needs. And of course, childcare is tied into that. One thing that I've seen come on the radar and all these different places I've been to, even in this last month, is the multi-use assisted living facilities where they're being built above shopping market, shopping areas, markets, pharmacies, all of that, where it's all integrated together. And I wonder if those kind of formulas can at least inform that potential collaboration as the housing trust goes, the home trust goes forward, trying to kind of predict what's going to be needed in the future, especially with 10,000 baby boomers retiring or DM and looking for smaller footprint bases, et cetera, et cetera.
That's a great point.
Congratulations. And then the other thing I was thinking about was, we brought up region 10. They also seem like, you know, having that, they should be in the room with that kind of connectivity as well.
Absolutely. We've been talking to Eva Veach at Region 10 with Arian Aging. We need to engage her in other aspects, Region 10 in other aspects too, but specifically in aging. Aging in place, we've engaged them, but thank you for the reminder to engage them on more.
Yeah. I mean, and all, all that stuff seems to be playing in and there's, seems to be a lot more monies coming down the pike for things that are integrated development like that, multi-use, not just for commercial space, but for assisted living, for, for retirement places where people can be and all, all they need to do is go down.
Sorry, sure. Yeah, that's brilliant.
Piggybacking on what JT said, I know that there have been some studies done where there are actually childcare connected with like a place to go for the, for people who are aging. And especially with memory care and they're connected. So the children and the adults are together and they have an incredible, I would suggest looking into some of those studies.
That's brilliant.
Yeah.
I could see how that they could complement each other.
Very nicely. Yeah.
Tanner, I had one more thing for you too, terms of outreach and engagement. Oh, no, no, you didn't say that. I forgot. And I've actually had the conversation with Tara Wick here, who works for the town and also has a couple businesses she's involved with, her husband. But the model in the state right now is Dusky Grass Coffee up in Stevo. Worth looking at. They have a mental health book club and they've become a certified hub also for people navigating mental health issues, back into the workplace and they facilitate that. And it's based on the old fountain house model from New York City where if a person isn't well enough to work that day, somebody else volunteers and takes a position. So it's always guaranteed. And Tara has expressed interest in that name. But just the, it's worth it. If you look up Dusky Grass Coffee, the folks there are really helpful and they've really created, created an amazing resource. It's much more visible than public health offices typically are.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it becomes part of the comment discussion.
It's a lot more approachable probably than a dingy public health office. That's great. I was actually talking to Tara today about something different, but re-engage her on that one. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just put it throughout. I think it's vitally important that the whole community's really working on mental health issues with market pull. We've been showing movies about the, one titled The Paradise Paradox about the rising increase in suicides in mountain towns. And I just think that the suicide crisis right now is something really to address. We need to de-stigmatize discussing mental health, making so that people are as cool to talk about their mental health as they are to talk about their short back and sprained knee. And I think everything we can do as a community with the county health, working with organizations like CPC and Rock is essential. So thank you for doing that.
I agree. And thank you for your support as well and your advocacy. Appreciate that.
Anybody in the audience have any questions either online or here in the room? For Tanner? Okay. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So that takes us to public hearings. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. When we do a public hearing, it's kind of a weird formal process where we introduce the item, the staff presented to the council, council asks questions of of staff, emptying applicant that may be involved. Tonight it's all about the budget and financial issues for the coming year. So it's not, there's no applicant involved, but I will open it up for public comment after we have the introduction and discuss any questions council has. And if you want to comment on this, you need to come up and state your name and address. Otherwise, when that's done, we'll close public comment and council will deliberate on these, these two items. So first up is item number seven, adopting the 2024 fiscal budget, year, fiscal year budget and setting of appropriate tax levels for 2024, reduction of pre-resolutions. And normally Pam would be taking this, but I'm guessing Preston, you, you're doing it?
I will take the lead. Yes, sir. Thank you. Pam's on vacation this week. So you're stuck with me. On the screen is a slide that should look very familiar. It's the 2024 budget adoption timeline. This will be the last time you see this for quite some time. And I applaud everybody for months apart, where to get to this point. We have five hours and 49 minutes to get this budget adopted. Statutory deadline. So way to push it to the end. We started in August with, late August really, with staff meetings. Followed that up with an introduction of the budget, really just a statutory requirement. Not much conversation at that October 11th town council meeting where the budget was introduced. Followed that up with a half a day, well, maybe a little over half a day retreat in this room. On October 21st, that was a Saturday, held a what I would characterize as a budget hearing on November 8th. That was a formal town council meeting to talk more about the budget. Followed that up with a more informal budget workshop to get some more direction. That was a Thursday before Thanksgiving. That was really the last setting where the budget was discussed in detail. We did a town council meeting on December 13th. In a normal year, the budget is statutorily required to be adopted by December 15th. But you all know by now, the special legislative session that took place pushed back the budget milestone dates. And so that's why we're here tonight. So almost a month, month later than usual. But any, any questions on the, on the timeline or anything like that?
I think we're all pretty familiar with the process. We've been working on it for months, as you say, and we're ready to adopt all this stuff and get it in, in, in place. But I should allow first to public comment if anybody has anything to say on this. I'll open it up to public comment and then we'll have our motions. Anybody here in the room or on Zoom? Can you see if there's any hands up, please? Like going once, going twice. All right. So that brings us back. We'll close public comment and bring it up here for the, the three motions. First one answered, we need a motion to adopt person's motion for 24-1, Town Ridgeway adopting budget calendar beginning first May, January 2024 and ending on the last day of December 2024.
I'm so moved.
Thank God.
Cool. Second.
Motion made by Polly, second by Beth. Vote, vote please.
Council Rambling.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
That lives here now. I'm, I'm sorry. I lied. I'm sorry.
I did. I did.
I'm sorry.
And then Mayor Clark.
Nothing.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. So now we have a second motion.
The move to adopt resolution 24-02 appropriating sums of money to various funds named on purpose for the purpose set forth below the 2024 budget here. Seconded.
Again, motion by Beth, seconded by Polly. Vote, vote please.
Okay. Counsel Rambling.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
And Mayor Clark.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Finally, motion number three, motion to adopt resolution number 24-23 of Town Ridgeway adopting property tax 7.24 certifications in the rate of operations.
Seconded.
All right. This time motion made by Terry, seconded by Beth. Vote, vote please.
Okay. Counsel Rambling.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
I'm.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
And Mayor Clark.
Aye.
Thank you all that gets us through our budget process and thank you for all your hard work on that. Huge thanks to staff for all their efforts. It's always a grueling process, but it's what enables us to do all the great work we do. So thank you very much for that. That brings us to item number eight, ordinance number 08-2023, increasing the rate of lodging tax and revising these proceeds thereof and other provisions in accordance with the voter-approved ballot issues of second reading assortments, which was introduced last month.
Yes, sir. Nailed it. This is second reading and a formal public hearing. It was adopted at first reading last month, that would have been December 13th. So as everyone should know, ballot issue 2A was passed by voters November 7th of that election. Now that the voters have authorized the increased lodging tax and the modification of proceeds are, are used and a formal ordinance is required to enact those changes. So that's why we're here and that's what's before you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Again, this is something we've been working on for quite a while. Thanks to the citizens of the Town Ridgeway for passing this validation and I will open up a public comment if anybody has any comments or questions. Hearing none, I'll close public comment and ask for a motion.
I move to approve the second, second reading, ordinance number 08-2023, increasing the rate of the lodging tax and revising the use of the proceeds thereof and other provisions in accordance with the voter-approved ballot issue.
Seconded.
All right. Motion made by Ross, seconded by Polly. Vote, vote please.
Okay. Counsel Rambling.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
And Mayor Clark.
Aye. Thank you. Again, that passes unanimously. So that takes us to a couple more housekeeping matters under policy matters. Item number nine, first one, adoption of the 2024 five-year or 10-year capital improvements plans. Just so everybody knows who's here in attendance, these are the guiding documents that we revise every year for capital improvements, things that we need to get done. They, they tend to be infrastructure projects, things like that. And they're available for review online on the website. And council's been working on these in coordination with the budget process as well. So anything else you want to add, Preston?
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Okay, someone wanted to motion.
Quick question. Why we still have the things in yellow on the, in the packet?
Because those are the things that are. Yeah.
I mean, previously I thought they were unresolved and that's why.
We were using that in the budget doc. That was fire. Yeah.
That's what I thought. But I wanted to make sure that they were still in balance for discussion.
There's, there's never a bad question.
They scared me.
You're, what? That's a lot of such fun. I move to approve the 2024 five and 10-year capital. Seconded.
Vote, vote, please. Motion by Beth, seconded by Polly. Vote, vote please.
Yes. Okay. Counsel Kroger.
Aye.
Rambling.
Aye.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Clark.
Aye.
Thank you all. That passes unanimously. So that takes us to item number 11. I'm sorry, number 10, adoption of the 2024 strategic plan. Strategic plan is a little bit different document. It's structured around our master plan and it brings up items under each section of the master plan and addresses either things that are underway or things that need to be looked into in the immediate future. And again, it's to be found on the database. Anything you want to add, Preston?
Preston, it's just a typo thing, but on each of the community.
Preston, it's just a typo thing, but on each of the community values, your matrix, it says healthy natural environment, full in twenty twenty three strategy. No, it's on all of them, or at least the first couple.
It's a hundred books a year that works. Good catch. Thank you. There any comments from the public? Question this? I, I urge all of you to take a look at this document. It's a really impressive accounting for all that this town government gets done on a yearly basis and I'm really proud of it. So urge you to take a look. Is there a motion to approve with the edits?
So moved.
Motion by Polly, seconded by Terry. Vote, call vote, please.
Okay, Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
I'm Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Clark.
Aye. Thank you all again. You can have this approval and great work on all the counts. Thank you, Preston, for your hard work on that. That takes item number eleven, review and action on professional services agreement for tourism promotion services between the Town Ridgway and Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce. Tara, I saw you come in to deal with this one. And we've got some members of the RAC in the audience as well.
Welcome. Evening, counselors. I'm Tara Wick, the community initiatives facilitator. And I was happy to work with the Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce to develop and Preston to develop a scope of work at the council's request to create a more detailed, specific and measurable deliverables for our professional services agreement. So Preston and I created a draft that we put before the Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce. We met with their board and executive director to discuss some questions, had a round of revisions. And those, most of those are incorporated in what you have before you now. Knowing that you're perfectly capable of reading that over, I won't bore you with going through it line by line. But I'd be happy to review any of the details you'd like to hear more about or answer any questions.
That's great that you guys all sat together to do this. That's awesome.
The only couple of things that I had on this were under, sorry, give me a second. I've got to find it so I'm not misspeaking again today. On the goals and deliverables, I love that it's like so succinctly and thoroughly written out. And I just want to make sure it's on record that sustainability practices with hiking, driving, rafting, those types of things are explicit. You know, like when, when you're saying like, go to Blue Lakes, like make sure you're also saying don't drive in the grass because this, this tunder grass can take up to a hundred years to grow or
buy a leg bag at Ridgway Adventure Sports.
Buy a leg bag at Ridgway Adventure Sports. That's literally on my list. Make sure that ATVs and side by sides are on the trail appropriately and not making your own trail, making sure you are staying on the trail and not cutting switchbacks and why that's an, an issue. Pick up trash that you see. Take a trash bag. Pick up your own bag of trash and dog food bags are not meant to be left on the trip. They're not biodegradable. Thank you for coming to my TED Talk.
Those don't have to be individually created. I mean, that's leave no trace. That's stay the trail Colorado. Like they're, they're really established places where you can plant too for those things. Yeah, but just wanted to make sure that those were like big on socials, which I know you guys do a great job, but tons of people are visiting, but and prioritizing those things.
People don't know.
Responsible visitor shed and educating visitors about that. Is that something that would make sense to add to the, to the professional services agreement as an additional? Okay.
Yeah, I can blow enough. I just wanted to make sure that it's like.
It's stated. Okay.
Explicit.
The day is January, I think.
The overall intention in addition to clarifying that the deliverables was to strengthen communication. Well, you know, it's in there to be meeting between Ilby, myself and Ashley as the executive director on a monthly basis. So we're well coordinated. We have a focus in there on the, the chamber website, a place where people can go to know about events. So we'll be reviewing the events page on a monthly basis. And you know, just making, and, and the other thing that we tried to be explicit about in this professional services agreement that hadn't been called out explicitly before, the chamber is a member based organization has a lot of members and they're perfectly free to do that. The money that the town uses the contract with the chamber should not be used for member services. That this is for, none of the services that the chamber provides should be provided only to members or exclusively.
Shouldn't be member.
It shouldn't be member exclusive. They can certainly provide services to members, but not with the, the funds from the town. If I'm saying, I hope that's clear enough.
I think that, I think the addition of the feedback survey, so not only getting feedback from businesses, but from our community. Because this, these are public dollars and how they're being used is, is important in that respect too. So I think that'll be a great addition to making sure all the chambers are working towards the goals set by us, that our community is getting that and put on a regular basis.
I agree.
And I can step down and leave space for the chamber to speak if you don't.
Not really. We really appreciate all the work the staff did with us to make this happen. We will really appreciate your improvements.
Well, I can add, it goes without saying, but we really appreciate the work you guys do on behalf of the community. And I think while it's the, the what's it labeled? The actual you know, what's, sorry, the scope of work, exhibit A, is, is much expanded plus these years and we appreciate you guys. You sit down and work on Tara and Preston to, to make sure it's more clear about what exactly our expectations are. And I think it makes it better for everybody. So we really appreciate that.
I feel it's needed, just so you know.
Yeah, I really appreciate you guys' hard work as well.
I think it helps level set things.
Yeah, there's a little clarity is always. Anybody up here have questions for either Tara or Rack?
I think it's a great document. And that's great that you, everybody could work together to put it together. It looks awesome. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready for motion group.
I move to approve the professional services agreement for tourism promotion services with the Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce.
Seconded.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Karen Bradley, seconded by Polly. Vote, call vote, please.
Okay, Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Clark.
Aye. What's your view? Go ahead.
John, you're not supposed to be voting except on tie breaks, are you?
Oh, that's true.
I thought, I thought maybe I missed it last month and I just kept what I didn't.
I pause this. That's Karen is not usually in these positions. So I don't, I don't think there's anything out of line.
Yeah.
There'd been something contentious. I think it would have been wrong, but no, like in the future, I don't want, unless there's a tie.
I know that.
Sorry, I didn't expect this. Thanks for us. You're always on it. Okay, that takes us to item number twelve, consideration request to include town owned property in annexation application and process, excuse me, process related to preserve PUD property.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Reserve, PUD, Valentin are here with us tonight. They are planning to submit an annexation application, second they are sometimes into the town in accordance with bridge radius code requirements. And they're wanting to include this small sliver of town property that's strangely part of the athletic parcel and currently outside of the town boundary. There's some pictures in the staff report. We have a chance to check that out. So simply the, the request before you all is to authorize the inclusion of that small piece of town owned property in the upcoming annexation application from Dominion Group LLC. Is that right? Yes, of course.
Yeah, can you go ahead?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, this is just a really weird house cleaning effort here. And I don't think anybody really knows how that little triangle got rubbed out somewhere, but we got one.
We can blame Robert Sabat.
Caught it right now. It can all be part of this.
And we appreciate you guys' efforts to make this happen. Any questions from the audience? We're done with the order in the room. Anybody online have questions?
I move to authorize inclusion of a small piece of town owned property in the annexation application from Dominion Group LLC. And authorize Mayor Clark to sign a letter consenting to the submission of the application.
Seven. All right, motion by Beth, seconded by Cabinet. Vote, call vote, please.
Yes, Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming on such a cold night.
Quick, quick question.
Yeah.
Does the town own any other property outside of Towne?
Outside of Towne? No. And that's like I said, that's just a total whip up. As far as I know, actually, we, actually, we probably do have a water plant.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay. In holding. And there's no gold in that little sliver we just signed off on. Just diamonds. Gold diamonds.
Gold diamonds. All right. If I didn't already say it, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number thirteen, review and approval of memorandum of understanding between Urea County Town Bridgeway regarding twenty twenty four operation funding request of bridge portion from county to town. And is that from the town to county road?
From county to town.
So that's, that's, that's correct. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, my confusion. Sorry. Take it away, Chris.
Yeah, this item is kind of the same as it ever was. Type item is annual LWU county with some small adjustments for twenty twenty four. I'll just kind of highlight some of the adjustments the commissioners are looking to have made from last year's MOU to this year's. There's an item that says development of the evacuation plan. That item did not get done in twenty twenty three. That's being worked on now. It's just been getting that project done this year. And the cost each jurisdiction went up based on the bid or the proposal that, that, that came in from the selected contractor. So again, that's, that's in the works now, expected to be done this year. That's why that notice. That's why the amounts differ from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. There's the addition of county desire for participation in the multi jurisdiccional, multi hazard plan. And participation in unity wildfire protection plan. There's the addition, addition of two collaborative efforts for twenty twenty four. First one is agree to provide per se agenda notifications packet items for information and package sharing for topics or land use proposals of mutual interest that may affect both city and county. And the second one, continue to collaborate on balancing recreation, conservation and working lands through the Orca project. And lastly, there's the addition of a future collaborative effort. That's to collaborate on management of vehicle traffic, traffic that passes through Urea County between Montrose County and San Miguel County. So again, just trying to capture some of the differences, or all the differences between last year's MOU and the one before you now. And the county has already approved this and provided signatures. And staff is, is completely fine with the modifications proposed for the county.
I love the way they referred to it as Ridgway USA.
I think that it's probably a subdivision.
Yeah, it's actually.
Development is called Ridgway USA Down Cars Line. That's the access from where the remax realty is up to the county shop is what that's talking about. It's been talked about for years, but it's tricky to try to figure out. How much questions from counsel for Preston or Jake, since he's still on? Jake, anything you want to add?
Nope, nothing to add. You've covered it all.
Thank you. At present, there is the annual thing we do, one of these other annual for turn of the, turn of the year kind of thing. It's all pretty straightforward. We have a great working relationship with the county and I think we're all very fortunate to have that. So.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Urea County and the Town of Bridgeway regarding twenty twenty four operational funding request for a bridge portionment from county and town to future goals.
Thank you.
All right. Motion made by Beth, seconded by Russell. Sorry. Vote, call vote, please.
Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Jake, for helping work this through and your, thank your administrative force. Thank you, Preston. I remember fourteen, resolution number twenty four dash oh four, amending the Town Ridgway standard specification typical drawings for infrastructure.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna introduce this and then turn it over to Joanne, but before he was, actually before he's a resolution amending the Ridgway standard specification and typical drawing, infrastructure construction. Various additions and modifications are being proposed. Joanne, our long time engineer, can talk more about those at a more technical level. So Joanne, take it away.
Okay, thank you. We've been going to update the non-water and sewer standards for seems like five years, but we finally got a good chunk of it done last year and have something in front of you. The last time we did anything major with the road and curb gutter sidewalk concrete specs was almost three decades ago. So there was a lot of rewriting associated with this. I can kind of quickly go through some of what we changed and why, and if you have any specific questions, we can do that. On the street, minimum curb gutter and sidewalk standards didn't do much in the way it changes on that. The two changes that might have some impact is we clarified what the minimum maximum cross slope for the roads could be. That came up a few times this year. And so we've specifically laid something out. And then the, the, the other thing that came up this year that didn't seem like it needed to be in the standards, but apparently it did, is that the design needs to fit. When somebody designed something that's going to become town infrastructure, it needs to fit with the adjoining properties that are existing and proposed. And so those are the only significant changes on the minimums on the road standards. We did a total rewrite. And instead of starting from scratch, which is probably when I got here, the town, when I started working for the town, the town had road standards that Mayor Batchelder had borrowed from a neighboring community and we did the same thing this time. We were hearing a lot of, well, Montrose doesn't do that. Well, it turned out Montrose does do most of those. So we took the Montrose standards and made a few minor adjustments, things that needed to be adjusted because we're a lot colder than Montrose. And there were a few things about working in cold weather that were a little different in our, in our old standards than what Montrose had and we stayed. a little different in our, in our old standards than what Montrose had, and we stayed with them. And then we explicitly added testing requirements for the roads that Montrose didn't have quite like what we've been requiring. Any questions on either of those two, and then I'll keep going?
Question two.
Okay. Okay, concrete, we totally rewrote that one. We've been telling people that they need to comply with the kind of specifications the town has required for work that town is built putting out to bid for construction. So we used those standards and C dot standards for the materials and testing and what the consequences are for failed tests. We added some things that we considered standard practice that we got some pushback that they weren't in black and white. So we figured we just add those to the the standards. Ron's comment, this is why the standards get so thick over time. And then the other document is an addendum to the standards that we updated in twenty twenty two. We clarified some of the definitions. We made some somewhat significant changes to disinfection and flushing. One of the changes is that we are going to require the flushing and disinfection plan come in with the design so that the water system is set up in a manner that facilitates the the flushing and the disinfection. We've had a couple, I think, three circumstances in the last couple of years where they needed to go back and make some changes to the water system just to be able to flush it. So we added that to something that needed to be incorporated into the design. We also clarified some things on what size gauge and what accuracy a gauge you need. And probably the most significant change is that we took, there are three common methods for disinfecting both new and existing lines. And that one of them is called the tablet method, where they stick tablets at the top of the pipe. And that had been used pretty consistently oh, in the nineties and the aughts, and we really haven't seen it a lot lately. Part of the problem is finding an adhesive that works. And so we changed that to be something that if you want to use, you need to submit a detailed plan on how you're going to make it work. And we did the same with the slug method. I've been in touch with the American Water Works Committee that wrote the specification that the Health Department uses for disinfection and there, when they were updating the specific, the AWWA specification, they left tablet in, but most, all of the communities they checked with have already decided that they don't want the tablet method. And that's the same with Denver Water and the City of Grand Junction. And so it seemed like we won't prohibit it. But if somebody wants to use it, we've set it up that they need to give us a little extra information. And let's see, on the revegetation, we incorporated a little bit of what we heard and learned at the Sonoran Institute, suggesting that if they need to replace vegetation, that they consider using Waterwise plant selection and modified what's required when a large planting is removed. Making it instead of twice the number, making it related to the cross sectional area of what was removed needing to be replaced and added an explicit requirement to provide irrigation to get the plants established. And then on the stormwater regs, I think those have been touched since twenty twenty when they were adopted. We added something that if your development is going to reroute water, that it needs, you need to address how it gets rerouted. And that needs to be subject to town approval. The big change on the storm standards is there's a formula for calculating how much water quality treatment is required. And the literature has two different ways that that formula is written, and one requires fifty percent more water get treated than the other. And we changed from the one that we're proposing to change the one, from the one that required less to the one that requires the larger volume. And the rationale for that is with the changes we're seeing in weather, we're getting fewer but larger storms in the summer, and those carry more debris and more sediment that we don't want getting into the river. And so we're suggesting that change. And that's it.
That's a lot, Joanne. Thank you. That's amazing.
Sorry, it's sort of technical and.
It's all good. I think it's really important. I'm just really glad to hear about incorporating some of the thoughts from the Waterwise workshop I went to and it's all good. I think it's great. Any other questions, comments?
I do. I just, I did read that they're all ADA compliant, but I just want to make sure that sidewalks, curbs, gutters, all of those types of things are ADA compliant, and they are like width restricted for a, I'm thinking specifically about power wheelchairs.
Um, we have a requirement in the typical drawings. We addressed ADA in the typical drawings because they change so often, and it now says something to the effect of you need to comply with the most recent ADA. And that the what we have on the typical drawing, if ADA isn't that stringent, you need to comply with it. But that's a good suggestion, and we can add it into the minimum. I can add a paragraph into the minimum standards to address that. Are power wheelchairs more than the three and a half feet that ADA requires?
They, I believe they fit within the ADA compliance plan, but I just know that there are some power chairs that are big guys, extremely. And yeah, I just want to make sure that our town is accessible in the peers from form of the word. And then one other, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Joanne.
No, go ahead.
One other question I had for parking lots and asphalt and all of those types of things is, are there any rules about not obstructing other businesses when building a new parking lot? I'm just, I'm specifically thinking about our new triangle project. I know that they blocked off several businesses for a couple of weeks when they were pouring the parking lot, and I know that a lot of that was like public access. And, you know, I'm thinking specifically about the balance chiropractic. I'm thinking specifically about Mountain View Physical Therapy, liquor store, bookstore, all those types of things. And I know that they were kind of blocked off, and they had to go through giant mud pits and those types of things. And I'm wondering if that should be something we look at, and if that fits within this.
I think it's covered in the general requirements. I don't think it's as specific as not obstructing another business. I, I think in the example that you're thinking about, that the owner might have said, I own both of them, and I don't care. But
I think that falls under some of the subdivision rights in terms of how you're going to communicate, like that comes on at some of those construction meetings where you're discussing communication with those other businesses, because you, at some point, you also can't, well, you could never do that. You're thinking, you're thinking about the construction between Alpine and the strip, strip of buildings where they were bringing stuff through. Hopefully, that was communicated. I know now in our new subdivision regs with requiring that sit down with Joanne and Preston. You know, when I went through it, it would say, hey, you need to reach out to your neighbors and let them know that the alley is going to be obstructed for this period. I just wanted to.
I'm pretty sure that is in the general requirements, but I will double check, and if not, we can add something to that effect. But yes, I think it also is in seven, four or five now.
That's exactly right. There's no hard and fast rule that that you can't restrict access to other businesses. I mean, every development has its own constraints, and folks got to tie into the water and sources stuff and are responsible for doing other public improvements that really revolves around the communication aspect, which Joanne says covered in the general requirements, but some of the developers, or all the developers we've worked with have been very receptive to making sure that they communicate what they're supposed to communicate, because they understand that the impacts can be big sometimes. And that's a, that's a big one that you cited, because that was several days.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was like in the rules somewhere, and I appreciate you guys. Also, fun fact, did you know that concrete behind water is the most utilized substance on earth? Like the most utilized building material. And I just talked to my dad, who is a who was a civil engineer, and he told me that fun fact.
It's dry.
Oh, it's not good. I'm just saying it is.
All right, any other questions for Joanne? Thank you again so much for your hard work on this, Joanne, and the rest of the staff. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve resolution number twenty four oh four, resolution to town council, town of Ridgeway, Colorado, amending the town of Ridgeway standard specifications and typical drawings for infrastructure construction.
Seconded.
All right. Motion made by Terry, seconded by Paulie. Local vote please.
Okay, Councilor Bradley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blaken.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody. That passes unanimously. I'm just, I remember fifteen, request for authorization to submit a concept and grant application to Great North Carolina Community Impact Program for Hartwell Park Playground Project.
Thank you, Mayor. So get staffs giving a go at getting a concept paper ready to submit to Goco's Community Impact program, where you talked to our regional officer, cautiously optimistic about our chances on that. The current playground structure, which we've talked about during the budget process a little bit. I do believe it's now over twenty five years old, so it's lived past its life expectancy. It's clearly well utilized every day, maybe not like days like today, but throughout the year. The project contains the following elements. We're looking to enlarge the youth zone from around eighty three feet by forty four feet to ninety five feet by fifty feet. And again, we're just talking about that. The the structure, the playground structure zone, not the area, not the the bigger area with the swings and other stuff. That's going to have to be part of the different phase. It could get even ricerious. So that's the first element. The second is to install a playground structure, something that is natural and color, fits the character of the community somewhat larger. Looking at that. And then third, changing the service scene of the youth zone from certified wood chips to foreign place rubber. Our public works guys are really excited about the prospect of that. The, as you all probably know, Goco grant opportunities are super competitive, but cautiously optimistic and feel good. We're in the process of, Stephen Schutzer's done great work, working with some of these companies to get proposals and cost estimates and designs that we can include with our concept paper. We'll be meeting with the parks committee next week. The youth council after that. Hopefully, the youth council will, before we have to submit the concept paper by the twenty fifth to collectively agree on a design and get cost estimate to include in the concept paper in form. So that's the just look, just looking for a blessing.
Maybe premature to discuss a bit. Can the existing structure be usefully recycled without being demolished? Could be offered to the elementary school, possibly the main street system.
Well, part of it, remember, was that there were pieces that were broken that we couldn't.
I don't know. I want to look through, look through those because I couldn't find it. But I didn't look too far.
Yeah, the thing about that is we have a source that does a, I think they call it a loss audit every year, and it seems like every year they kind of de-ness on another piece of that playground, which is really important to this conversation. So that's what that's talking about, but I think that's a good question to see how they, how they can be repurposed or reused somewhere else. We can, that's more recycling.
Um, quick question. Is this, I believe this is like a big part of what the Parks, Trails and Open Spaces meetings about next week. Are the youth advisory council going to be in attendance, or have they been invited to the Parks, Trails and Open Spaces meeting?
They haven't been invited yet at this point. We can, we can certainly.
Just, I mean, no stress, no pressure, just thought it might be a good one for them to be in.
After the last meeting, this came up. Pam was pretty excited. She was showing me pictures of the catalog, and one of the possible structures I don't know is affordable, was shaped like an old steam engine train.
Yeah, that's the one that I found in the budget meeting. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You know, within sight that we have trains.
All right, any other questions?
I moved authorize the middle of a concept paper to the third cycle of Goco's Community Impact Program for the Hartwell Park Playground Project.
Seconded.
Thank you, Russ. Motion made by Russ, seconded by Polly. Local vote please.
Okay, Councilor Bradley.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blaken.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimously. And now let's take this to the, you know, number sixteen.
Sir, thank you. I will, Joanne, I'll give a go and kind of run it through this. Jump in if you feel the need, if I, if I botch anything. First of all, shout out to Joanne. Obviously, big effort with the standards, but she has done a tremendous amount of work on the SRF loan application and the accompanying energy impact, energy mineral impact grant application, which are all submitted. We're in the queue for both of those. One of the requirements to qualify for the state revolving loan fund dollars from CDPHE and the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority is to include a twenty year cash flow analysis that helps reassure the funding agencies that the municipality can actually pay back those monies over the term. And so it's a pretty interesting exercise and a lot of work. That's why in Joanne's conspiriting that for spreadsheets. The town is not obligated to adopt any kind of ordinance or resolution or make a commitment based on this cash flow. What we submit is just one way that that we can make it work. If it's found that we don't have enough revenue, they will tell us that we need to adopt a rate ordinance that provides revenue to keep the water enterprise fund solvent and able to repay its debts. It takes a lot of assumptions to to prepare a. Uh it takes a lot of assumptions to uh to prepare a. Uh any sort of cash flow analysis, but something especially something in twenty years uh with all the capital projects that you have to undertake over that term and. Uh just all the little things that happen over the course of twenty years. Uh we typically make an assumption about typical growth and water sales and typical increases in expenses over time. Uh the growth in sales is rarely enough to cover the increase in expenses over time, though. So to address the uh anticipated revenue shortfall, uh there's ways that we can uh adjust the rates. So that's why we're here tonight. Just looking to get our input from you all on how to, on which. Approach to take in. In the model, uh there's two options. Joanne and I were talking about it and actually it was Joanne's idea to to put it before you all and get consensus on that before we submit this. By tonight, hopefully. It's all part of our thesis assessment. It's a lot of deadlines, getting intent. First approach is an annual percent increase, either with an occasional bigger increase, especially when we do a larger project and incur additional debt service. Joanne, I think the uh the assumption with the annual percent increase was somewhere around three or three and a half percent every year over the course of. Of uh the twenty year term, is that right?
Yeah, um I think the revenue will probably grow. At about one percent or so. At over time. And I had plugged in for both the amount of revenue growth without changing the rates plus. Revenue adding an increase to rates at three and a half percent. So it would basically be. Two and a half plus or minus. On an annual basis plus growth. And then occasionally. When we do a big project and the debt service is going to change, we'd probably have to do a bigger rate hike. And you want to continue or you want me to, Preston?
Finish. So that's that's one approach. The second approach is from a personal standpoint, the one I prefer, um but. No one really asking my opinion very much, so. Second approach is a larger increase every X number of years. I think in the model, we did like every five years uh. Or we use five years in that model, uh but we can space it different. So again, just looking for some uh. Um some input on on which approach to take with this model, so we can spend it. A little bit every year. Or spread out over the course of X years.
What's the run? Then we're looking just forever?
Uh no, uh twenty year term. With a lot of assumptions, I mentioned that and I know. None of this might make sense, but um you know, the whole point is to to keep the water un-solvent and to remain in a healthy enough position. I could go on and on and on again about the budget and uh how healthy it is with our reserves, day fund, et cetera. Uh the aims to, but one of those assumptions we've worked in there is to maintain that healthy. That healthy amount, which some of these funding agencies are going to look at uh. When you know we're asking for these dollars competing against some of these communities on more. As healthy a position, right? So that's something we're going to have to navigate with the right time comes, but. So we get ahead of it and see what you all thought.
To everybody's thoughts.
I think I like the every couple of years. Kind of hit, kind of calm down, everything calms down. Take another one.
Yeah, I mean, it's six of one.
If it helps to know. The five year increase. Would be around a sixteen percent increase. To come out. What I did was I tried to end up in twenty forty five. With a one point two. Um five or so um. Reserve with both models. And you can do. A flat. Uh depending on how the capital projects lot come out, you can do a flat. Three and a half percent increase plus growth in sales. For the twenty years on an annual basis, or you can do a sixteen percent every five years. To come to the same place with the same assumptions. That doesn't mean that's going to be what happens.
And there's no commitment to this.
I would say you do it periodically and because that's kind of how we've been approaching things. It's not five years, it's been like three. So I would say we say that we're doing it on some cycle because that allows us if. You know, if there is some drastic economic downturn and we want to procrastinate all that for a year because. That's how we want to approach it with our community, then we can do that if we're not being absolutely held to it. That would be my preference.
Makes sense.
Is there a way, and this is. A a very unbaked thought. But um is there a way to? Oh, God. Uh I don't even know the words I'm trying to use right now. Um. Base it on either A, water usage, or B, like. Increase some peoples to five percent because they use this much water and then. People who use this much water has more like a two and a half percent increase.
Well, that's been that discussion we have every year. Do we increase the base rate versus do we increase? And those are those discussions that we have had and I would like us. To continue having to keep furthering our own goals around how we. Manage water usage and use for the larger amounts.
And and the current ordinance does charge more as you use more.
Cool. And is there a way to do um? Like pay more than increase if you use more?
Yeah, when we when we reset the restructure, we.
Yeah. Once you be on a certain level, right?
Yeah. Yeah, like X X. Yeah. Thank you, guys. Again, it was a half baked thought that obviously did not go all the way through my brain. Which probably you didn't have the conversation again, and Paulie hasn't had it.
So what I heard was uh so far was uh. A larger increase spread out over X years. Rather than the other option of a little bit every year. John, is that what you heard?
I heard we want to do something every three to five years and hold it steady in between. Is that right?
Personal thought.
That's, yeah.
That's just my gut.
I think that's what you heard.
Great.
Okay, that one will go in.
Thank you, Joanne, and thank you all.
Thanks.
All right.
Do you feel listened to?
Not really.
Tell us the agenda so I can ask Preston his opinion.
I'd like to make the motion then to ask Preston's opinion about.
Every, every time.
Well. The next time on the agenda is the uh. Staff report about the annual election presented by Pam, but she's not here. But it's all pretty straightforward. We have four seats up this this spring, myself and three counselors. The three seats other than myself are Kevin, Gramley, J P, and Terry. She lays out the nomination period and. All of that, any? Questions about that? Pretty straightforward?
Do we know of anybody? Voicing interest?
I don't.
Yeah.
But I'm.
She said it's too related.
Usually once the, once, you know, once the notice goes out and. Um you know, the word is the street about who's running and who's not, um that usually. Creates interest. Maybe you want to share what your thoughts are about running again. You don't have to, but. I'll figure that out. You're not interested in sharing at this point, that's fine too. That's probably all we need to say.
I don't know if that's. The purview of this board to just.
Sometimes people just want to share, but no, it's fine. Um that takes us to town managers' report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um. We we talked a little bit about the. Waterline replacement project as it relates to the preliminary needs assessment, cash flow analysis. So thanks for holding that conversation. Um and thanks again to Joanne for getting a lot of that work done so we can move forward on that. Um an update on the G A C project, uh the uh. The design is still with C D P H E for review, really hoping we can hear back from them sometime soon so that. We can get that design finalized, obviously, and. Begin construction and get everything installed up there.
I saw that in a hundred days. That's crazy.
Yeah.
They're just.
And they got a penny. They got.
We don't know.
I think uh I don't know if Joanne, yeah, Joanne's still on. If you're listening, Joanne, I think the. The standard turnaround is somewhere between, it's like supposed to be like forty five days, isn't it?
Water's supposed to be forty five days. They're not making that, but. They say that they missed our submission and I'm trying to get them to. Recognize that it's been in Sep- September.
Anything we can do to help?
Uh. Let's let's go to Denver.
I imagine.
I know, so guys, I know.
I imagine this is one of those things where the more stink we make, the more we're gonna piss off.
Yeah, we'll be making phone calls.
Yeah.
It's in the portal. It hasn't since September, so.
And they didn't, they claimed they didn't see it in the portal.
I think that's what they've told Joanne.
All right, well, just anything we can do to speed that up, we all want to get it done.
Um John, you and I had a call with. County and the city and all points transit on the uh and actually Jake wasn't there, but uh. O'Conne was there, representing county on the commuter route update. So. Progress is being made. There was a lot of good discussion points, various concerns about stops and. And what happens in the weather and uh. Bus or the. Vehicle goes down for maintenance, stuff like that. So really good logistical things to talk through. I think we're looking at early February for rolling that out. That's what I heard, John. So um still not there yet, but but inching closer.
You may put in here encouragement for further suggestions on naming. I my sense was that it was decided to be our way and they're working on graphics, so I. I doubt there's going to be further discussion about that because they're going to get the graphics done.
I just got, yeah, you're right. I just pasted this email from.
Was that, was that from Gary?
From Gary, I don't think so. But yeah, I think it is our our way. To think of the service. Uh any questions on that?
It's amazing, all of the logistics.
That was crazy. A lot of what we talked about is it's bound to be so successful that it would be full right away and. Try to figure out how to add another one. To the root, but that's, I guess that's a good part of that.
And I'm just realizing that I forgot to include the stats that Shane sent me. Sorry about that. Annual uh. Crime statistics.
Go ahead.
Uh stuff like that, so I'll put that in next possible point, sorry about that. Happy to answer your questions.
I like the legacy that matters thing. That was really, I think that was really important for all of us to see.
Want to care what you told. No one say. Okay.
No, Jerry?
No.
I can only imagine.
Uh it was bad, terribly.
I thought it was, it's truly interesting.
Any other, oh, I I had a question. Um. Redwood Council meeting is it's Valentine's Day. You don't usually worry about that. Does anybody just thought it'd be polite to ask whether. Any of us are rather, we can have tandoons on Valentine's Day.
I'll tell you.
I'm not sure if it maybe knows the Valentine.
It's it's not, it's not a big thing in my.
Okay.
It's a great excuse for me, so.
I would like to say, Russ. The joke made me giggle. I did, I did a good, I did a good giggle on that one.
I I've had a request from uh people who are online that we actually read the joke in case they don't have it in front of them.
Oh.
Okay, the joke is from Ross My- Meyer, Mayor Pro Tim. What do you call a Christmas wreath made of one hundred dollar bills? The answer, a wreath of franklins. That that was pretty good. Oh.
Oh, yeah, that was good.
All right, I always encourage more submissions. Any other comments or questions from anybody on this?
Being Santa Claus, you get all the cool Christmas chicks.
Yeah. Do you have a bunch of rooms?
I I do not. I do not.
President, do you want to talk about our work session? intended work session?
Uh. Which one?
Echo.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. Please, go ahead.
So uh we've been approached by Echo Mountain Properties, Rochester Museum, Railroad Museum. Requesting a work session, the council, to talk about access issues. Uh Preston, I think that would be a good idea. So we'd be tentatively looking at probably late February. I know you already have one special meeting in February.
Um we do one. It's in conjunction with the February fourteenth uh meeting, so. The Valentine's is up over.
But probably we'll be looking at late February, early March for for that. Uh check in, is there consensus that? Yeah, okay, great.
It'd be really great if we could get John calls or representative at the table as well.
That was gonna be my question is, is he gonna be in the room?
Uh that's, thank you. We we will do what we can.
Thank you.
Can we do do it on Valentine's night?
Lock up the whole day.
Now that'd be great. Be great. Um. So other other things on the agenda, council committee reports. How many things?
He has an open house meeting coming up. February or January, let me look at the calendar. Just to let everybody know, an open house, just with a few groups kind of come say, hey, and talk to everybody if anybody's interested. It will be uh January twenty third on a Tuesday. Most likely in the decor room.
Um in the evening.
Uh yes, in the evening, most likely, probably about five, five thirtyish.
January twenty third?
January twenty third, Tuesday.
I'm sure Sarah will give us more details.
Yes, yeah.
When they're forthcoming.
It's the liaison to the county fairgrounds. We remind everybody about the upcoming ski tour rain with the. Fresh snow now and it's really coming in the next couple of days, which is pretty.
Yeah, that's our, our research is pretty dang heavy.
Yeah. Yeah, that is. It's snow to move.
Anybody else? There are none unless there's some objection, I will declare a surrender. Thanks, everybody.
Ask this.
Thanks, Ross.
Yeah. It's up there.
Yeah, that was good.
I was efficient.